I take them off, yeah. They're water resistant. It says point. No.
Okay, we have at 7:15, we'll now call this meeting to order. First up, if I can ask Mr. Meadows to lead us in a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance.
Sure, if you're able, if you'll rise, let's observe a moment of silence and then I'll lead us in the pledge. Let us pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
First up, presentation, recognitions, and awards. We have fire rescue service award. This time, we will recognize and express our sincere gratitude to the senior volunteer members who give of their time and talent to serve our volunteer fire and rescue departments. We are incredibly grateful for the decades of service, including lifetime membership recognition. Mr. Gary, Mr. Hanks, welcome.
Good evening, board members. Thank you all very much for having us here tonight. We're here for another special occasion to recognize our outstanding volunteers who've contributed anywhere from 20 to 50 years of their lives to serving our communities, whether it be on the fire departments or within our county's rescue squads. So, we're here to present them with this outstanding achievement of their years of service to our communities. So, without further ado, we'll start by calling names and recognizing those volunteers. So, first off tonight, we have David Scotty Caldwell from the Blacksburg Volunteer Rescue Squad with 20 years of service. Next up, also from the Blacksburg Rescue Squad, we have Leslie Combs with 20 years of service. Next up, from the Blacksburg Volunteer Rescue Squad is Kelly Levine with 20 years of service. Lastly, from the Blacksburg Volunteer Rescue Squad, we have Robert Tom Rogers with 40 years of service.
Unfortunately, no.
From the Christiansburg Volunteer Fire Department, we have Todd Chrisley with 20 years of service. From the Christiansburg Volunteer Fire Department, Alan Shaw with 35 years of service. From the Christiansburg Volunteer Fire Department, we have Jeremy Williams with 30 years of service. From the Christiansburg Volunteer Fire Department, we have Barry Simmons with 20 years of service. From the Reiner Volunteer Fire Department, we have Ron Baldwin with 30 years of service. From the Reiner Volunteer Fire Department, we have Gary Francis with 35 years of service. From the Reiner Volunteer Fire Department, we have Patrick Sailors with 35 years of service. Lastly, here in person tonight, we have Mr. Kenneth Neil Turner with 45 years of service to the Reiner Volunteer Fire Department, or excuse me, the Reiner Volunteer Rescue Squad, the Christiansburg Volunteer Rescue Squad, of course, here at Montgomery County. Board members, we have some more on our list tonight that unfortunately weren't able to attend in person, so I'll just read through those real quick. From the Long Shot McCoy Volunteer Fire and Rescue Department, we have Wayne Akers with 21 years of service. Michael Henry Barnett with 20 years of service. Clarence Edward Sherman, better known as CJ, with 22 years of service. Keith Williams with 25 years of service. From the Blacksburg Volunteer Rescue Squad, we have Kate Mahiev with 25 years of service. John O'Shea with 29 years of service. And Paul PJ Fleener with 30 years of service. From the Blacksburg Volunteer Fire Department, M. Douglas Epperali with 50 years of service. C. Robert Carner with 45 years of service. Dennis C. Price with 35 years of service. And Anthony S. Wilson with 30 years of service. And lastly, from the Elliston Volunteer Department, we have Clyde Hodges with 45 years of service. Thank you, board members.
To our volunteers, we are in debt for your service, decades, lifetime memberships, and we are so proud and have our sincere appreciation and gratitude that we extend to you all. Board members, Mr. Fitchikowski?
All I can say is ditto. The volunteers in this county have done so much for so long. It is, it is one of those jobs that is kind of going by the wayside now because people are finding other things to do or just not interested in serving. So, you represent something that we really cherish, we really want to hang on to as long as we possibly can. So, I thank you for all your service.
Supervisor King?
Just want to say how much I appreciate each and every one of you for doing things for your community. I know it takes a lot of time away from your family members, but I want you to know personally, I do appreciate each and every one of you.
Supervisor Demots?
Just looking out on the crowd tonight, it's so comforting to know that when the citizens of Montgomery County have an emergency, that we have this level of experience and dedication that's there to answer that call. Thank you all for your decades of service. I know that extends to many of your extended families and friends that are also serving in volunteer capacities. We are so blessed as a whole community to have your dedication and your care and concern for your neighbors. Thank you all.
Supervisor Bunn?
Thank you so much for all that you've done for our county. I've been witness to some of the emergencies and fires that have happened in our county and have been incredibly impressed with the capabilities of you all. And, you know, above and beyond the emergencies that we have, it's all the office staff and all the support too, that's so important, so thank you.
Supervisor Shepard?
I'd like to say about the same thing as everybody else. I really appreciate everybody's service and I know what an obligation it is when you dedicate your life to doing and providing that service for the people in your community. I also know how much it means to everybody in the community. I've had to use the service several times in my life and I know a lot of others that have too, and you are greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Vice Chair Biggs?
I want to also thank each and every one of you for everything that you have done for our county. Our county wouldn't be the county it is without you. And I've had to use a rescue at my home and the professionalism and the experience that the people have brought, just when I've called them, just in my case, is just beyond measure. And I do have to give a special shout out to Mr. Keith Williams from Long Shot McCoy with the 25 years of experience. I taught him as a second grader at Harding Avenue Elementary, and this makes me feel really old that he has 25 years of experience. That's a quarter of a century, so thank you all for everything.
Again, volunteers, thank you for your dedication and your care in faithfully serving our community. We are extremely blessed and we cannot show our appreciation enough. We appreciate all that you do for our community. Board members, let's give them a standing ovation. Thank you. Next, under presentations, Virginia Department of Transportation, Mr. Clark.
Good evening, everybody. I'll list a couple of the maintenance things we've been working on, and it's been a wide variety of things. The biggest group of routes on this list of things we've done is machining and hauling stone to unpaid roads. It's a good season for doing that, and we're getting back into that here at the beginning of our fiscal year. But we've also been doing some brush cutting, and I know there's a lot more to do, but brush cutting on Flanagan Road, brush cleanup, because we have had some storms that brought down some trees, on Roanoke Road, Clarence Road, Huffville, and High Rock. Also cut trees on 460 and Tyler, as well as Tucker and Mount Tabor. Mowing, catching some of the slight distance issues before we get into a full round of mowing coming up. And also been doing some patching. We patched Pilot Road, Allegheny Springs, North Fork Road, also patched up at Keister's Branch Mash Run and someone on 114. There has been pipe replacements going on as well. There was a big one on Merrimack Road the other day. It took a while, but also replacing pipe on Catawba Road, Janelle Road, and on Glade Road. We're getting ready to start, it's kind of a small rural rustic road project, but it is in your six-year plan. It's one we can fit in this summer, and that's service treating the second, the little section of, of Mount Pleasant, not Mount Pleasant, Craig Mountain Road. The part on Mount Pleasant is not getting done. It's the one on Craig Mountain that we did a little bit of at one time, and if you've got a space left over in that, that's been going on. And county might be interested to know that we're starting, our design group has been, had a meeting today to start kicking off some of the smart scale projects that have been approved, and we're just now getting the one at Allegheny Springs and Route 11. Very, very early stages, obviously, we're just now assigning project managers, getting a scope. But it was mentioned in a meeting today, along with many other projects, that we're getting ready to work with our consultants and getting the design for it. I'll let you know when that goes, and that's all I have as far as updates. I'll take any, any kind of questions or anything.
Supervisor King?
Thank you for being here. Just one question. You got an email about Rosemary Road. Have y'all had a chance to go out there and look at it?
No, I've not looked at that yet. Sent that in, but I'll see, I'll look at that myself, though. If nothing's been done, I'll look at that myself.
If you would, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, Supervisor Demots?
This might be outside of the purview of this meeting, but the 81 improvements up in Salem and Roanoke County, do you have a schedule for completion or any types of estimates? And I'm thinking this is a particularly crazy time on 81 with all of Virginia Tech and Radford University students starting back to school, and I know you've already experienced some delays just because of accidents, but is there a timeline on that?
I don't have the, I don't know if I have a completion. I used to just keep it written down because I would get that question a lot. I can, I can find it. It's on schedule, it's not like the 81 bridge over the river.
Maybe for the next meeting, if you could just come to, to give that information to...
I'll come, I'll have the schedule for that one and when the, and when the next one's going to get started.
That'd be great. Thank you, I really appreciate it.
Supervisor Bunn?
And to follow up with that, I know Thanksgiving is super difficult on 81 going north. Usually, there's an accident. Do they automatically plan on not working on that holiday?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Okay, as well as for Christmas.
Yes, and they'll, and then, and there's probably a couple of days around Labor Day. Yes. And then, and there's probably a couple of days around Labor Day that they won't be working as well.
And to follow up on Supervisor King's comment about Rosemary Road, so there's potholes, pretty extensive brush cutting, and I made a note for siding. I have no idea what that means. So, you know, he brings it up, I bring it up because the planning commission, somebody wanted to do some business back there. And all the residents came out and just were beside themselves about the fact that they maintained the road themselves for the most part, which they need, obviously, VDOT to take responsibility for that. If, if that business ever comes to fruition, great, or not, but it sounds like they need a lot of help. And then, lastly for me, the Mill Point Road email that I forwarded you today, could you speak to that a little bit or what the next steps might be?
Yeah, I mean, we've done quite a bit of work up there, and I'm guessing it's not what the resident of the road was looking for. We do have certain constraints as far as what we can do with drainage within the road and where some of that stormwater might be coming from and how to handle it. So we're, I mean, we'd be glad to review it again, and if you'd like to come up or if we just meet with the property owner and if they can explain what they would have liked to have seen instead of what we had worked on. I know there's several spots in that neighborhood that we've worked on as well. Both, there's a kind of forks and goes up on each side. We've done a little bit on each one. But there's a lot of stuff going on there. It's, you know, it's a road that kind of goes up the side of a hill there, and so all the drainage comes right on down. So, you know, sometimes being out there with, with the, with a citizen, they can really show, because they're there every day. And even if I try to catch it when it's raining, it may not be raining, you know, when I think it is there.
Right. So I'll get with the resident, and then hopefully we can schedule something sometime soon. And if we can do it during a rainstorm, even better, right? So we'll try to coordinate with that.
Okay. We're glad to do that.
Thank you so much.
Supervisor Shepherd?
Yeah, a couple of things. I had a couple of people contact me from, that live in McCoy about a couple of different things. One of them is something I brought to you about a year ago, Sterling Drive. I know Steve Schuler complained about it, and his take on it was, not only does he live down there, but the rescue squad getting in and out. And the guy that contacted me about that just recently said that the road's in really bad shape and there's some potholes that damages tires and even the places that have been repaired or makes the road really rough. And I know what they're asking for, and I know what the answer's going to be, but they're wanting it paved, of course. Also, he also said, and he sent me a picture, their road sign, their street sign is non-legible. So we get that replaced at least and straightened up signs crooked and just, just needs to be repaired in general, I think. And also, he brought this up, and as did another individual, there's evidently a lot of low line limbs on McCoy Road. I was trying to think of the guy's name. He contacted me and said he'd actually had damage to his camper pulling it because he couldn't get to the middle of the road. He was passing the vehicle and hit a limb. So I appreciate anything you can do.
Sure.
That's all.
Supervisor Fidzikowski?
I appreciate hearing that, that project at the intersection of Allegheny Springs and Route 460 is going to get started. There's no doubt in my mind that will definitely reduce the number of accidents there, especially, you know, since that is the major detour route for I-81. So it's, I think it'll be money well spent, and I think we'll see a big payoff from it. So I'm glad to hear that. I have received from several of the bus drivers that are concerned about some of the roads down in the Shawsville area that, and the biggest complaint, I think, is low-hanging branches and some of the vegetation growing out from the side of the road, which forces them to drive in the center. And of course, then, all these are secondary roads, so you got hills, you got curves, and it could be a bad situation. And they're all pretty concerned. So I'm going to, I'm just going to read down this list, mainly because I told them I would, and I will send you a copy of it, so that you'll have it. You won't have to write everything down. Den Hill Road, Friendship Hollow, Flatwoods, Dark Run, and specifically at 440, Dark Run Road, apparently there's a low-hanging branch. Willis Hollow, Fisher's View, Kirk Hollow, Cove Hollow, Poplar Hollow, a lot of hollers. Wayside Drive, Mount Pleasant, George's Run, and there's a couple of spots on Allegheny Springs Road, too, where, I don't know, I guess all the growth of the vegetation this year is just causing the branches to drop a little bit lower. But, and since school starts Wednesday, that's a pretty tall order, but if there's any way that maybe a truck with a small crew and a pole saw probably could take a few of them down because some of them that I've seen are, there's no way around them. They have to hit them. So whatever you can do would be appreciated. Thank you.
Vice Chair Biggs?
Okay. Just a couple of things. The roundabout at Prices Fork, I got another complaint about that from, actually, someone that lives in my district thinks it's totally unsafe and uses the Prices Fork Road to travel, and he's like, well, are they going to do anything? And I'm like, well, I keep bringing it up, but it's just the fact, I think it just wasn't constructed properly. I don't know. But anyway, I'll just bring it up again. Like, he's worried when those developments get built and the traffic gets on that road and goes around the round, somebody's going to get hurt. So I don't know. Is there anything, any update about it?
No, I mean, it's been looked at for, it's got a speed limit on there, and the roundabout is to a standard for the traffic. So I don't know if any other signage or anything like that could be, could be done.
Well, okay. I guess we'll just wait and see what happens. Like, I guess if there are a lot of accidents there.
And you'd have to look at the cause. I mean, what's, they say it's unsafe, but how so? You know, what exactly is the issue?
I think it's almost like it's, the way he was describing it was too small, like, for what needed to be there when the traffic increases. So I don't know. I mean, I'll just keep my fingers crossed. Because I know how we do it in Virginia. We wait and see how many crashes or how many people get hurt before we do stuff. I get that, but, you know, it just keeps popping up. So I just want to make you aware. The other question I have is a weird question, because I, I'm not familiar with this. But you know on Big Falls Road where people park to go to the river? Okay, so they're not supposed to park there? There's something about private, no trespassing. What, I don't, I don't really know, because I haven't been down there in years. Do you know anything about that?
No, and it's, I don't know how much right-of-way or if any that we, we'd have. It may be built on prescriptive easement. Certainly don't own, you know, all the way to the river. We may have a 30-foot prescriptive easement. I don't know. I can't remember. It's been a while since I've been out there. One time, we did have no parking signs in certain areas, but not along the whole thing. So.
I can add a little bit to that.
Yeah, Darrell?
If you're going down that way, on the right side, it's Railroad Ballast comes all the way down to the road, and there are no parking signs. I was down through there the other day on that side. Now, a lot of it on the other side, but I think what Mary's talking about is the junction actually owns it. And they posted it because they use it to pick up their tubers.
Right.
So they've got it gated off, actually. I don't, I don't know. It's been a problem for 100 years, so I don't know how you'd fix it.
Yeah, because I gather a lot of folks use it to go down where they get into the river there. So, okay. All right. Well, thank you, and thank you for being here.
Sure.
Mr. Clark, again, I also had a complaint about the roundabout on Prices Fork Road, and it was funny that they said, does anybody even teach in that in driver's ed anymore? I did, I do. So I know, too, that VDOT years ago had some type of training programs or videos on how to properly use the roundabout. I don't know if that's something that you could put out on social media. I'll try to look up.
Yeah, that's good.
Well, too. I think the problem is that maybe people are not communicating and using the roundabout correctly and going a little too fast probably for that. But I did have a citizen complain about that. Also, brush, brush and low-hanging limbs on Janelle Road, but they didn't specify what part of Janelle Road. So again, I'm sure that's with all those tight curves and stuff becomes a visibility issue. And then just wanted to take this opportunity to remind everyone of the transportation study on Route 114, Peppers Ferry Road. Like, how many times a month do we mention Route 114 and Peppers Ferry Road? But I would encourage all citizens, if you travel that route, to take that survey. A survey closes on August the 16th, and that's important for us to get that data to know for improvements there.
There have been advertisements for that in several newspapers, and it's on VDOT social media and all that.
Yeah, from Shamrock to Rolling Hills. Of course, we know that there will be improvements. Rolling Hills with that turn lane coming up, that will help.
Correct.
Will be a big impact. So just encourage everyone to take that survey, and that's on the VDOT website. It's VirginiaProjectPipeline.org that they can go to as well. And then with the start of school, just a reminder that still have some issues, even though I got some compliments last board meeting, just a reminder that from the town limits of Christiansburg to Radford Arsenal, the speed limit is 45, not 55. And with the school zone in Bellevue, we know we've had some issues with people not doing 45 and then not slowing down for the school zones. And with school starting this week, we want to make sure and where people to be extra patient, take extra time, and just to use, you know, make sure you're paying attention in those school zones. And of course, never pass a stopped school bus. And even if the signs are not displayed, if they're loading and unloading, state law requires you to stop unless you're going in the opposite direction and there's a physical barrier separating that. A lane of traffic is not a physical barrier. It has to be a concrete, pressy medium. So just want to remind everyone of those things.
That was the safety topic at our internal staff meeting this morning for the district.
Are there any follow-up questions or comments? Supervisor Shepherd?
I'd like to put in my two cents worth about the roundabout. And I know I've said this before, the approach from the Blacksburg side of that thing at 45 mile an hour is way too fast. It would appear to me that if you could slow the speed limit down to 25 on both sides as you approach, would, would help a lot. I mean, I've seen vehicles come from Blacksburg and go through that thing because it's almost straight on that side.
Yeah, it's a lopsided roundabout.
At 50 mile an hour, I mean, or 60. I don't know how fast they're going, but too fast, I can tell you that. And the video they, she, she mentioned, because I don't think a lot of people understand who has the right-of-way where in those things.
Yeah.
That speed limit on, at 45 on that side is ridiculous. I think it ought to drop to 35 anyway, all the way, but.
I like a note of that. Yeah, that's a good idea.
Darrell, I like that idea, too. Maybe that would help.
Well, I mean, it looks to me like there's enough traffic on that road now, especially at the high-volume times of the day that it would warrant it all being 35 or at least 40, like the town of Blacksburg is down to that point. And I don't think it'd cost much, just take that 145 speed limit down.
That's a low-cost there.
Mr. Clark, as always, thank you for being here and thank you for your service to our county.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Guidelines for public address. The Board of Supervisors allow citizens to present comments on issues deserving their attention during public address at each of the meetings. Each speaker has four minutes whether speaking as an individual or representative. All comments must be directed to the chair or other supervisors from the speaker's lectern at the front of the room. Speakers may leave any written statements or comments to the supervisors with the board clerk. Speakers will be judged out of order should the speaker engage in any personal attacks, use profanity, or abusive language or debate with the audience and not address the supervisors. We have a sign-up sheet at the beginning of each meeting. After I call the names on the sign-up sheet, any citizen that would like to come forward may. When you come forward, please state your name and address, and you'll have four minutes to address the board. Wayman Pack. Mr. Pack?
Afternoon. Wayman Pack, Ryder, Virginia. And I know most, if not all, of the emergency services personnel have left, but I too wish to express my appreciation for the job that they do, especially volunteers. That's very commendable. So what I really wanted to speak on tonight was the county code that was adopted concerning emergency medical transport. I know this was just put into effect at the June 12th meeting when it was adopted, and it prompted a lot of discussion, and a lot of clarifications were made verbally, but they didn't make it into the actual code. So when it says, "The scheduled rates for services shall be established by resolution of Board of Supervisors of County Montgomery," we know, because we were at the meeting, that's 170% of the Medicare reimbursement rate. I know it. Walk out the door and see who else knows it. So, under the compassionate billing policy, under the C3, it says compassionate billing is intended to eliminate out-of-pocket expenses for consumers of ambulance services. And the county regards taxes paid by residents of the county as inclusive of copays and/or deductibles for ambulance services for all persons living in a tax-paying household. So what about the people who are not tax-paying household members, if I have company? Are they covered under this law? Doesn't say. So the next thing is the county's billing process. Or company will not pursue payment recovery through a debt collections agency without express authorization of the county administrator or his or her designated. I know at the meeting it said no citizen will pay. That's not what the code says. The section is still ambiguous. It was stated in the meeting that no consumer of these services be charged, but the language does not specify this. Can this code be amended to make the intent clearer to the average layperson? Most people reading that section would think that if the insurance company refuses to pay, that the county administrator or his or her designated is coming after them or could come after them with a collections agency, because that's the way it's written. So if you decide, I, I don't know what paperwork that, that the county's going to give out to people when they come in, when emergencies happen, but if you can't amend the code, at least make some of these changes clearer in the paperwork that you send to the actual people who are served by the EMT services, because this is very confusing as it's written to the average person. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I do not have anyone signed up after Mr. Pack, but if any citizen would like to come forward, they have four minutes to address the board. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close public address. Addendum?
No addendum this evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Items of consent?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Demots?
Aye.
Ms. Bunn?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
New business. First up, sub-recipient agreement with the PSA, ARPA funds for drinking water capital projects.
Motion.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Demots?
Aye.
Ms. Bunn?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right, reports. County adminis, I'm sorry, county attorney.
No report, Madam Chair.
All right, county administrator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did want to report tonight that on Thursday this week, several of us will be attending the VACO County Official Summit in Richmond. So we'll be up there to hear what all's going on at the state level right now. Maybe we'll hear something about a budget. I don't know. But we'll be up there for that. I also want to thank I also want to thank Angie for covering for me at the July 24th meeting. It seems like that was a year ago now, but I appreciate Angie covering. Angie's not able to be with us tonight, but there were two items that she wanted us, wanted the board to be aware of. The planning department had their solar energy work group open house last Wednesday afternoon, followed by a work session on the solar ordinance during the planning commission meeting that evening. There was good attendance at the open house and quite a bit of discussion during the work session. Planning and zoning staff will incorporate the feedback they received and bring a revised draft back to the planning commission in September. They also plan to have a work session with the board at some point during this process. Also, wanted to mention to you that the county's been reviewing motor vehicle valuations as we did about this time last year. Last year, the values were inflated due to the pandemic and the effects of that, and the inflated values were anticipated to eventually return to more normal levels. As a result, last year, an assessment ratio of 80% was applied to motor vehicle values to determine the taxable value. While the values have returned to a more expected level this year, they're still somewhat inflated. If any of you have even looked at used vehicles, they're still not back to where they were several years ago. Staff's continuing to analyze the current values, and we plan to have a work session for you at our August 28th meeting, along with recommendations for an assessment ratio for the 2023 personal property book. So wanted to make you aware of that. The commissioner of revenue has also asked for an extension in preparing the personal property book as we continue to evaluate this, but we will certainly have more information for you on August 28th. Angie sends her regards, and that is our report this evening.
Very good. Supervisor DeMots?
No report.
Supervisor Bone?
No report.
Supervisor Shepherd?
Just a short follow-up on the roundabout situation. With those speed limits being dropped, also, a little bit of enforcement wouldn't hurt anything. Please, that's all.
Supervisor Fidzikowski?
As I think all of you know, I'm on the solar work group that was looking into our soon-to-be solar ordinance, and I had the opportunity to go by and see their presentation. That is one thing that I have really heard from citizens about. They are so grateful that that was done, and they fully understand that our staff work hard, and really, to add more work to them is a difficult thing, but they, they pulled it off. And everyone that came that I spoke to later had just high praise for the, for what has been done. They're very complimentary of our planning department. Not so much me, I don't feel like I contributed all that much. I know that the solar thing comes from the sun, that's about it. But they, we, we were able to look at a lot of different plans that other counties had and kind of mold and shape it into something that we think is appropriate for our county. And one of the things that I've tried to explain, and I hope I don't screw it up, is the state has a plan. And in the state plan, they basically look at a certain percentage of land that they would like to see developed into solar. So what some of the other counties did was they took those percentages and applied them to their county, by acreage or by square miles or whatever. And that's how they came up with a number that would be appropriate to build out. In other words, you just don't cover everything with it, there are limits. And what our group looked at, because Montgomery County is, you know, we have a lot of mountains and hills and cliffs and you name it, that you really can't put solar on. So we looked at what land was available for solar and did the calculations that way. And I thought that was just a very smart way to do it and to put some limitations on it. But it's, it's a very good program, and if y'all get a chance to see it, I'm sure Sarah will see it, being on the planning commission, so. But it, I think it's, it's well-thought-out, it's practical, easy to understand, so I'm very glad that they did that. It kind of puts us ahead of a lot of other counties in that respect, where they're still scrambling to figure out what to do, so I'm very grateful. The other item I wanted to mention, because I don't know about you all, but I receive numerous calls every month from citizens wanting to know, where is the fiber? And I am very glad to report that I have seen it being put up in the Allegheny Springs section, and I'm not sure where else they might be working, but it is going on and it is happening. And of course, that is the first VATI grant that we received, and when that one's complete, then they'll move on to the second one. But they are making progress, and that is a very good feeling, and I hope citizens can see the light at the end of the tunnel now. That's all I got.
Very good. Supervisor King?
Just a quick thing, could we take another look at that policy we got for paving all that? I do understand what you're talking about, you know, the county administrator or his designate could do that. I'd appreciate that. And we had a couple of structural fires in our area, and I just want to tell Christianburg Volunteer Fire Department, Rhino Rescue, and a few paid staff from the county on one structural fire one morning, it was about 15 after 4:00. We was out there until almost 8 o'clock and just give them a pat on the back. They still had to go to work after that. Took about an hour and a half, two hours to get trucks back together. I do appreciate that. We had another structural fire closer to Rafford, and I'd like to thank all those and City of Rafford. They brought a truck down. We, we really work well together, and I do appreciate Mayor Horton and City of Rafford for allowing them to help us on that call. That's all.
Vice Chair Biggs?
Okay, my only announcement is that we did have the Race for Ace on Saturday, and Sherry was there, so we had two supervisors there. As usual, it's very enthusiastic group of people there. And so I did report on behalf of the board that we had started, our first student started in 2018, the fall of 2018, and we've served 785 students with this program, Accessibility for, you know, community college. And we went ahead and announced the amount of investment that Montgomery County has made, which is $1,675,345. And that was as of June 30th this year. And so I also said, and with Sherry was there, too, that, you know, the invested, investment that we have made as a county is invaluable as far as what is going to happen with these students in the future. And so I thanked Martha Ann Stallings, who took this and ran with it from the very beginning. That was the committee I worked on. And also Angie Covey for coming here and getting our board invested in the program. And so I wanted to thank Sherry for being a sponsor. And remember, each of you can be a sponsor next year. This is the commercial, I'm doing it early, you know? You can get your name on a T-shirt and have your own private sign, and you can come out and help us.
My name, sure.
Yes, it will. I'll make sure. Okay, and that's all.
Thank you, Vice Chair Biggs. Yes, it was a fun event, and thank you for the challenge of, that everyone can sponsor and wonderful program, and that Race for Ace raised about $15,000. So that was a great, that will go along with our funding to help our local students here in Montgomery County. So a few things. First of all, I wanted to say congratulations to the Montgomery County Department of Social Services on their ribbon-cutting ceremony and membership to the Chamber of Commerce today. That was great. It's a good way to develop our relationships and develop partnerships with our local businesses to promote the mission of helping our families become economically and socially independent for brighter futures. So congratulations to them. Also, wanted to do a quick shout-out to the many businesses and I know, and churches, and I know this is just a few that I know in my area, but that have gone raising funds and supplies and free services for back-to-school. There were several free haircuts given for Barbara and Beauty and Hard Part Barber and Beard Shop in my district that gave out free haircuts. Several free backpack and school supplies events, Midway Community Church, Good Shepherd Baptist, Bellevue with the Helping Hands Pantry and Grace Life with Helping Hands. And I know that there are plenty more of those were just in my area that I'm aware of in the last couple of weeks. It's wonderful to see our community come together and to support our families and back-to-school. Several other things, wanted to do a reminder that we have an extended work session on August the 23rd, so that's coming up real quickly for us. And then also wanted to do a quick reminder of this weekend, see Fidzikowski, Tomato Festival. Are you gonna be serving some green fried tomatoes down there with us?
I don't know if I'll be serving them, but I probably will be eating them.
Eating them, okay. And then, of course, Heritage Day with the Montgomery Museum is this weekend as well. So we have lots of fun activities and events coming up. And with that being said, we stand adjourned. Thank you.
Supervisor DeMots to sign.